Great, good evening, everybody. In response to the effective orders issued by the Governor and the State Department of the following meeting on the Board of Education, Delmar and the School District, we request the first and following all current health regulations and effective term of the meeting. 1.1 is called to order for open session. Open session of August 24th, 2022, the regular Board and Trustees' meeting is called to order at 5:15 PM. 1.2 is public input concerning items in the closed session agenda. We will now call members of the public who are requested to address their governing board regarding items in the closed session agenda. Are there any? And there are none. 1.3 is adjournment in closed session. The Board will be in the closed session to consider the following matters. 1.1, conference civil council, existing litigation, Government Code 54956.9A, one matter, as of then and after on the agenda. Hi! Okay. Good evening. We are reconvening open session at 5:46 PM under item 3.1. By law, the Board policy must notify you that this meeting is being recorded. While that law and policy, any member of the public may address the word on an item on the agenda or a non-agenda item, but the public must present a written request of the word. Therefore, I ask you to attend to the speaker's list at this time to help us run the mission meeting. Speakers for non-agenda items, if you turn in prior to item 4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items, will be recognized and called to the podium at that time. You will have three minutes to address the governing board. For those who wish to comment on a particular item on the agenda, your speakers will be turned in by item 5.3, hearing of the public regarding agenda items, will be recognized and called to the podium when your request of the agenda item comes up and have three minutes to address the governing board. 3.2 is a form of action taken in closed session. Under government, Board, in closed session, and by Nanna's vote, the Board voted to approve a compromise agreement and release with student in OAH case number 2022060848. The agreement includes special education services and attorney fees in exchange for waiver claims against the district. 3.3 is pledge allegiance. Would that welcome call of the Board's business.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, 3.4 is approval of the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Second. Favor? All right. Motion to approve the agenda that we passed. 4.2 is correspondence. The requirement. Good evening. The superintendent's office received the following correspondence regarding district business on these topics. The DMUST Health and Safety Plan, protocols, guidelines, practices, school and class inquiries, Delmar High School, and Universal Meals. Thank you. Okay. 4.2, hearing of the public regarding non-agenda items. We will now call members of the public who are requested to address the governing board regarding items that are not on the agenda. Members of the public who would like to address the governing board regarding a non-agenda item, must read incident speakers at this time. Is there any public input concerning non-agenda items? Okay, there isn't. So item 5.1, Board report, Delmar, Health, Learning Teachers Association, and the committee committee president.
President Halpern, Dr. McFlurk, Board, and Captain. Good to see you all this evening. It's been a little awesome having a personal talk to you guys. Anyways, I forgot we had those four meetings tonight. I was thinking back to me. Really, considering it's been all summer, we've been waiting for August to come around and get back to work, things have been really well. I'm pretty happy with my first week at school, and I've heard a lot of good things from my coworkers. Sorry, a little sometimes, right? But anyhow, this last week, I have heard from a few people asking me about the agenda tonight, and they were concerned that we're not seeing a specific item on the agenda. And I explained to people, my understanding is that what we just got seen concerns came up in the spring during this strategic planning. So really, all I had to say right now is I'm looking forward to do that presentation and some discussion surrounding those things and how we can fully resolve those concerns. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. 5.1 is Board report, Delmar Schools Education Foundation, so will run our new DMSF president. Look.
President Halpern, Dr. McFlurk, President of the Board. Thank you so much for having me here. Nice talking about the DMSF. Yeah, it's exciting. You know, I've come to the Board meetings and seen people do this. He's been the president for two years, so now it's my turn. This is my first one, so please forgive me if I'm not doing things right, like not speaking into the mic, for example. All right, well, it's exciting. We're back to school. The kids are, I'm sure they love summer, and some might be apprehensive, and certainly us as parents, we probably are pretty glad that summer's over and they can be back at school. But one of the exciting things is the changes to the C+ program, meeting the C+ teachers. So I think we're really pleased that last year, we had such a good, successful, amazing campaign, and we're able to have such a good C+ program for the kids this year. So it's exciting to be back and see what that's looking like, because I know districts have so much work in making sure that we have a good program for our kids. So one of the things that it's such a pleasure to be part of, the DMSF, the foundation, and to help raise money for C+ teachers, is to know that what we're doing here is we're raising money for credential C+ teachers. And it's my job and the job of our directors to make sure that parents understand that if we didn't have this funding from the foundation, that we might have a situation where our regular classroom teachers might be tasked with doing some of this C+ programming, but because the district puts up funds and the foundation raises funds, we're able to have people who are credential in the specific sector. So we'd like to share this information in terms of what some of the skills of our C+ teachers are. Obviously, our regular, our classroom teachers are fabulous and fantastic and very skilled as well. I'm just saying, it's helpful for parents to understand that what we're doing here is getting people who are special acts in the sector to C+. So we have, out of our current C+ staff, there are 17 people with master degrees, over 306 years of teaching, over 12 awards of recognition, and three division captains. So wow, we have a good, solid team in our C+ department at our school. I want to make sure that people were aware of this information, that people asked about the funding. So we have this on our website, so if anyone wants to know, you can see it on the website. The district is able to put about 60% of the funding into the C+ teachers' salaries. Now, if you look, this is historical information, so we add information every year, and the district gives us the data, so we appreciate it. And C+ funding is 40%. So if there wasn't the, the DMSF funding for C+ is 40%. So if there wasn't the foundation, and we weren't raising the money that we raised, we'd have to cut our program probably by 40%, or the district would have to figure out some other way of making that shortfall. So it's really important, 40% is a lot. You'll see that the numbers of C+ specialists has changed over the years, but if you also look at the problem of, all the second problem, look, let's see that the enrollment numbers have also changed. So the number of C+ specialists, that is, has to do with the enrollment in the school and they get assigned to the schools based on enrollment in the school. So at the same time, we're trying to roll out new components in C+. We're trying to also make sure that the staffing is balanced across the schools and matches our enrollment. So our goal this year is to raise 1.4, and then last year, we got very close, very, very close. We were able to get, it doesn't sound correct. About to say we didn't have an RMPD here. Yeah, we did get 1.3, so that's great. We're hoping that we can raise even more than 1.4. We'll see. Build on all the great work that's been done in the past, and the generosity of both parents that have really supported, the foundation's supported, that C+ program in the district. But that will give us about 30. We will have 30, the district funding and the foundation funding will have 30. We're hoping we're able to hire 30 new C+ students. All right. So just a reminder, I've said some of this, why do parents, why do we ask parents, why do we as parents have to want to donate to the foundation as opposed to C+? Because the dedication that this district has to credential C+ teachers really helps our district stand out among the districts. It really helps us be in the top 1% of all elementary school resources in the capital. It's a key part. Having credentialed C+ teachers means that these, the teachers that are in the C+ program know how to target their, their training to what the students need. So the PE that they're getting isn't only having fun like they're recess, but it's actually physical education, there's also science, which is bringing that, that understanding, that training to really help our kids grow. So that's sports, but also in arts, science, we have teachers who really try to do the best that they can to give our kids a fantastic education. So we really think that without the support of parents, without the support of the community, we have sponsors and businesses as well. Without the support from the dedication of volunteers, whether it be support of money or work that volunteers do, we wouldn't be able to have a fantastic performance this year. So we really want to thank, you know, we have the foundation, I want to thank everyone who has supported us, one way or another, through funding or through volunteer work to really make our district even more accomplished. We are currently launching our, just this week launched, our Fall Getting Campaign. So you should be, parents should have been receiving materials, the classroom, there should be materials, C-banners going up. So look out for that if you haven't seen anything about it, but it's really important for us to, we started having this fall fundraiser, because we have two main fundraising events, the Fall Campaign and the Jogathon. The Jogathon is an activity that the kids really love, they get out there and they're doing the, the running around the laps, and it's so good that we've been able to really bring that back last year after the break that we had, COVID. We figured out a good, and hopefully we're getting better, more fun for the kids this year. The Fall Campaign really helps us, and it's critical for us as well. So what we like to do is, if you donate, there's incentives for the parents that we think are, we target them more towards the parents, and we target the incentives in the Jogathon for the kids. So if the parents donate our recommended amount of $100 per student, then they'll be entered into opportunity drawing, and there'll be some good things that the parents might like. It just helps say thank you for supporting the foundation. And also, if you donate at a foreign level, you get a magnet that shows you support C+ by supporting the foundation at, at our award. So that's it. Just thank you.
Thank you so much, and welcome aboard. Looking forward to having you in this room. Okay, 5.3 is Board member reports. Just a couple today.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the new school year. I attended the teacher welcome back breakfast and orientation on August 9th. Well, not a date, but it was really great to see you back, and just as a parent, I've gotten to go to back to school night for my kids, and meet their teachers, they're awesome, and I get to learn ice and social very nicely. That's it.
I'm pretty sure I also went to the teachers welcome back morning. So it was nice to see everybody back at the, in the school, new teachers, the new hires that you guys have in. And it's just kind of nice to have all the students back in class, all the back to model, everything this year. So it's, it's fun to see it, and I look forward to coming here.
Good evening. Somebody else attended the back to school, the back to school breakfast with the teachers as did the other two board members of the year today. It's really a very joyous way to start the year, and I can't believe we're underway. We still have like one other week and a half till sleep today, so yeah, definitely. Okay, we are at the board, we're just part of the school.
So yes, it has been a very positive start to the school year, and thank you to all the Board members for being at the Welcome Back event, and our entire staff was, was joined together at one of our schools and participated in some Welcome Back events, as well as some wonderful professional learning and collaboration time throughout that day, and then portions of the week as well. And it was a great week, and the first couple of weeks have been fantastic. Our superb educational program is up and running. It's been a true pleasure to be at every school and seeing our children and our teachers at every one of our schools experience meaningful learning and be so full of joy to be at school, and it really is fun to see it firsthand. So congratulations to everybody, some of you are in the room, a great start to the year for all your hard work, very, very much appreciated, and fun to see it happening firsthand. We have had some area meetings to make sure that we are in alignment with area districts around as far as what we're doing moving ahead, so it's great that all of those things are continuing and pretty much back to normal throughout the county, so that is a very good thing. Our Great Beginnings event and the start of our brand new employees, which you talked about, Scott, has been, was, was excellent. We had a couple of day event for our brand new employees, and they are welcomed into our school district with what the culture is and the maintenance frameworks for our district, and then they're provided some mentorship at the school site, greeted by staff on the school site that helped to help them do the lay of the land, and so that's been exciting as well. Pacific Sky School has opened, yay. We're in the second week there, very successful. It's fun to run into parents even out of town who are so happy and stop you on the street to say thank you. So I am expressing that to our board, because sometimes it comes to your meeting, and they're so very, very grateful for Pacific Sky opening, so the support, direction from the board to get that to happen over the last, construction was 15 months, and then a lot was, a lot went into it before that, before that happened, as we all know. Universal Meals, that you'll hear more about tonight, because it's up and running, and we did have a hell of a back to school nights all over our schools, so it's been a very, very successful start to the school year, and I'm very proud of the educational programs that we have going, all ready on week two of the school year. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, 5.5 is hearing of the public regarding agenda items. Friday, whether you'd like to address the governing board on a particular item on the agenda, your speakers will be turned in at this time. They'll be recognized and called to the podium and your request to agenda comes up, you'll have three minutes to address the governing board. 5.6, Board approval minutes for July 27th, 2022 regular board meeting, and August 4th, 2022 special board meeting. Is there a motion to approve of this minutes?
I'll say it.
Okay, favor? Motion to approve this is passed. Okay, good sense of agenda. 6.1 through 6.17. Any questions on that agenda?
A couple of questions. The 6.96 attendance is showing a total lot of money for our notes to talk about. How many people are going, who's going in? How many?
We have our administrative team going to Learning Sights, which is, it really fuses instructional program with the learning environment. And so since we are in the midst of transitioning all of our environments, modernizing them with the build of Pacific Sky School and our new build on, our rebuild on the horizon, it's a very timely event for our administrators to attend.
And the other one, the, there is a Learning Sights, the Synergies event.
Right, so Synergy is our student information system, and that is, we have two people attending that conference, the two people who really oversee the inner workings of that system, which is attendance, all of our students, and how we manage their student IDs, and how they interface with our learning platforms.
Okay, all right. Okay, I assume we are allowed to travel, because I know there's that Assembly Bill 1887 that bans travel for like only two different states. I think it's something for money, but I don't think we're subject, so we said get to that, because Tennessee and Texas will run a list if I ask.
Well, that is a good question.
So I assume, I, because I think it's more universities that can, or other more state rather than more local, but it is state, I don't think, I don't think we're using, just want to make sure that we're legally allowed, because the college is separate, and we can not travel to one, two of the states.
We'll definitely follow up on that.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Just to piggyback on the conferences, what is JAMS, Asian User Conference? What's the JAM stand for?
JAMF is our user, our device management system for all of our Apple products. And so when you look at all of the iPads we have in our students' hands, all of the textbooks in our teachers' hands, and even our Apple TVs, and so they are having it in San Diego, and we have a couple of our team members who manage that system, and so with it especially being in town, we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to get some of the best practices with managing all of our students' individualization.
I don't know how we can access, but have we reached our Apple devices?
Yes, and that, so JAMF is, one of the benefits of having a device management system is we can auto-update things, we can actually freeze devices. We have had the occasional time where devices have lost their skull, and we can actually kind of turn it into a brick, and so there are a number of pieces that protect data and protect the device, and so that's, that is part of what JAMF does. It also has to enroll and push apps and control scope of things. This is an opportunity for them to learn from some experts and also network with some of other people who do other sort of issues.
Any other questions?
I'll move to approve the agenda.
Okay. Does a favor? Hi, close. Any questions to pass this? Thank you. Okay. Item 7.1 is Waterford Special Education Continuum of Services. May you check Director of Special Education and Streets of Sports. Okay. 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 Thank you so much for having me, President of Board Members, the Board, Dr. McFlurk. I'm very excited to be here tonight and share information about our awesome services at Dr. Tor's students in social education. I feel so incredibly fortunate to be part of such a high quality of social education. And one of the things that we're particularly proud of, that all of our staff really believe in the Jamie's Better Child. I go to one of the classrooms, and in those classrooms, it's amazing to just see all of our learners learning construction of meaningful and purposefully, and we couldn't do that without the help and support of our general education teachers and our special education teachers and sports staff. Before I jump into the continuum, I wanted to talk a little bit just about what special education is in general. Special education is specially designed instruction. That specially designed instruction is specifically for our students that have an identified disability. All of our students that have an identified disability then qualify for what we call an individualized education plan. Our individualized education plans are built supports and services that our students require in order to make educational progress, and all of those supports and services are provided by our very, very highly qualified, highly trained special educators. As a school district, we provide outstanding special education supports for all of our students with our programming. Some of the things that we provide to our students begins with an appropriate assessment. We're required by law to ensure that we're assessing all of our students in the area in all areas of this exactly. If a student qualifies for special education, they are afforded what we call a free appropriate public education. That reappropriate public education is outlined within each child's individualized education plan. Each student's individualized education plan is built with supports and services that may be in accordance with that, and those supports and services are provided to our kiddos in the least restricted environment. In order for our children to qualify for special education supports and services, they must first meet criteria in one of these eligibility categories. If our students do meet eligibility in one or more of those eligibility categories, our students are able to access a number of different services. Some of the services that make access are up here on this slide, and all of these services are afforded to our children to make sure that they are making the type of progress that may deserve to be made in their classes. Our staff is very highly trained to be able to look at each child's unique needs, and then to be able to identify what they require very specifically based on data and assessment to drive what supports and services the student is accessing. Right now, I do know that there's been a lot of misinformation out in public about our children and their ability to access supports and services that they require in order to meet their needs due to budget constraints, and that is absolutely, completely detrimental to us. As a school district, we have been, and we will be, and will continue to be committed to ensuring that our students receive all the services that they require for the benefit of their education regardless of budget. We determine all of those needs based on individualized, private plans, and if there are times that we do need to use a general plan, that is exactly what we do with assessment. That's where our children occur. Something extraordinary thing that we've been doing is really focusing on our primary actions. As a school district, we've been able to really define our backgrounds, the content of learning our students are accessing. We've also been able to ensure that all of our students have access to really outstanding learning environments that support their learning style and their unique needs. Another focus for us has also been to start training our staff. Part of those, next one. Part of that extraordinary work really depended on our staff. We couldn't do this work without our main staff, that is our general educators, our special educators, and our instructional staff. Some of the things that we are incredibly proud of is defining our programs. We've been able to define our students' programming based on the material learning that's actually happening in those classroom settings. We also have highly trained staff. We train our general educators, our special educators, and as well as our instructional aides, and everybody who receives similar training, so that's what we're teaching in our classroom settings, all staff we're able to do, and it can be, to meet all of our children's needs. We have been doing co-teaching and training for at least the last three years. We're currently training our current cohort, so we're very excited about that. And then another thing that we can really focus on is our environment. We are absolutely thrilled by our teachers embracing their leader within our classrooms. If you have an opportunity to go into any of our specialized programs, you can really see that all of those programs allow our students to really have to be centered learning based on their unique needs. So I get to tell you a little bit about the continuum now. So our continuum of services, as you know, as a district, we really strongly believe in all students having access to a strong academic core, as well as skills that are close, and every student within our district, regardless of programming, receive just that. Some of the services that we offer to our students include our Learning Lab. Our Learning Lab allows our students to access their learning, can either pull in, push out, or a co-teaching model, all dependent on that child's individualized education plan. We also offer a program in our district called Social Emotional Learning Foundation's program. Program. That program allows our students to access their learning in a therapeutic environment. That therapeutic environment allows our kids to have supports, individually, socially, and emotionally, so they can access the learning that they need to access. Another program within our district is our Core Content Instruction Program. That's a program where our students in that class are accessing their learning, but through a very highly modified or scampolied way. So our teachers in that class are trained in order to kind of meet our students' needs so that they're able to access that curriculum. The next program that we have is our Alternative Learning Curriculum Program. That program allows our students to access foundational academics using an alternative curriculum. So all of those kids are accessing their learning a little bit in a different way, but still being able to access standards. The last program that, the last program within our continuum is our Functional Life Skills Class. And our Functional Life Skills Program allows our students to access functional life skills with, in the area of fine academics. And then all of those students also have access to be learning what they need in order to become functioning at all, in front of children in society, so it will really have what specific functional life skills they require. Our district, we're very fortunate to also serve our students at our preschool age. Our preschool age students receive special education services in a special education setting. Some of our students do receive some of their services through an intensive language program, and then we do have some kids that access speech services at their own schools. As a district, it's important for everybody to know that we're highly committed to ensuring that all of our students have access to the program that they require in order to become active members of our society. It's something that we value in our students, and it's something that our teachers value as they're pushing out their instruction. And all of the learning that our kiddos do, it changes and modifies based on what that student's individual needs are at that time. And that's why we rely on our IEP teams to drive disciplines that estimate our students' needs. With that, we did not do any of this work without our staff, whether that's our special educators, our general educators, or our instructional assistants. So we're so incredibly thankful for all of the time that they invest in our children. A lot of this information can be found on our website that you can go ahead and visit using this link. And then I just wanted to say thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to come and speak about our programs. We're very proud of all of them, and we're very proud of the work that our staff is doing each and every day to make sure our students are meeting the academic and social, emotional needs of our subjects or we need. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Thank you for your report. I am pretty familiar with the co-teacher model, so I'm glad we're implementing it now. I know it's been around for a while. I know it's different depending on what level we're at. At the elementary school, I'm wondering how we're implementing it. It's not like, like at a high school where you can have a big English class and then a co-teacher and then have maybe like a five of IEPs in that class, because we can't have a co-teacher from small grid at every site, so how are we distributing them?
So our students that really can access a co-teaching model, if those, if we have trained staff that are available for them to be accessing, then they'll access that type of learning curriculum. Right now, based on the training that we've received, it says to basically have a ratio of students within that classroom anywhere from three to five, depending on what their special needs actually are, and then developing the co-teaching programming around what their individual IEP is requiring. So whether that's in the area of language arts, math, whatever their IEPs stating that they require and need.
So I guess I'm asking, how many co-teachers do we have per site?
Oh goodness, I don't know. We're on our third, I don't have that information offhand. We're on our third training of co-teachers, and we've been training anywhere from thirty to forty at school year, but I'm just not entirely sure the exact number.
So all the co-teachers have special credentials?
No, that's not correct. All of our co-teachers, so we've been part of our co-teaching training. We've been teaching our general education teachers, our instructional assistants, as well as our special education teachers.
Okay, that's a little different than what you were. Okay. My second question relates to the early childhood program. How many Gen Ed students do we have attending? Is it like a fifty-fifty balance? Because I know there's a lot of evidence to support that when preschoolers with IEPs are learning in, in connection at the same time in the same room with preschoolers that aren't with IEPs, that there's benefit to those, to both groups?
Yeah, there absolutely is a benefit to that, absolutely for sure. So we do have community friends that are visiting or come to our inclusive preschool program, our early childhood program. Right now, we actually have more general education students than special education students attending it. Typically, at the very beginning of the school year, we're in the process of assessing students, but ideally it's a fifty-fifty type of split with our students on IEPs and our students that are in general education.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
So I really like how you guys take care of each student and do what's best for each student, or each individual down there. And can you go into a little bit more on the least restricted environment? Because I think that's what really gets students progressing through special ed and getting out when they get out of our district as being functional and able to take tackle middle school, high school beyond. So, and how, how you guys work with parents on making sure that we have the appropriate environment for the students?
Yeah, I think when it comes to least restricted environment, there's, there's a spectrum of that and what makes the most sense for each individual child. So it really does have to be data-based and assessment-driven and, and based on conversation of, of the school site team as well as the parent team. And in looking at that, we know that, that least restricted environment can change for every student, but really our desire within our school district is to make sure that our students are independent learners within the environment that they're accessing. So that's always where we're coming from, trying to make sure that our students can access independently, making sure that they're able to self-activate, and then provide the supports and services, and whatever that least restricted environment may be, I'm sure it might be.
So I, I, an aide would be in more restricted environment than, than saying, try to get away from aides and having them interact with other students and learning, learning how to...
Sorry, I'm pretty quite curious.
So having aide with every student is very restrictive in that case. I mean, what you're really trying to do is to get students, the ones to be the aides that have the aides, the ones that identify from, interact with other students and learning how to be and become independent learners.
Absolutely. And aide is one of the most restricted things that we can provide a student. Of course, if a student requires an aide in order to access their services, absolutely we're going to provide that. But if it's something that a student can access, the supports or services or accommodations, that's where we're going to want to start first. But if there is a need for an aide to be provided to a student, that will be based on data and assessment. But it's really important to note that all of the programs that I spoke about, when I talked about our continuum, all have aides that support those programs. So aides are available, but it's dependent on student ID as identified within their IEPs.
Thank you.
Thanks for taking time to explain the program. It's really not a coincidence, and I'm always amazed by all the elements of the program, whenever I hear about it. And understanding the continuum and all the different five buckets, basically your steps along the way is also really helpful. I was going to ask about the least restricted environment, too, so thanks for explaining that. And I'm also, I've always kind of been impressed with how many students are able to access some level of special education services. Do you know roughly what percentage of our students access the services at some point in the level that our, our students that are accessing? Many services through...
They're about like ninety.
And many special ed. And one percentage of our students have IEPs during the time that they're at our schools, like two days.
That's a good question. I don't know the exact percentage of that. I do know that the, the national average is between about ten, twelve percent. I believe that for a percentage of the faculty, I've got numbers that are accessing.
Okay, I remember hearing higher number before, so maybe like, could you let us come back to us with what the percentage is? Because it does seem like a lot of...
No, it's not.
So it's a good for speech, you know, that, that any, that's regarding the services. And then from a budget perspective, do we have, like, do we know a percentage of our budget is not like headed toward someone else, or is it providing the special education?
I certainly do not see that, but I think we're...
We actually have a slide that'll show a little bit more about the budget impact. So we have, we've got it broken down in our, under the pine pod in actuals with the federal, state, and general fund. From the general fund, we've spent about six million dollars. So that would be somewhere in the range of one, eight percent. That's off the top of my head, but six million dollars is the general fund commitment this last year to special education.
Great, thank you. Well, I mean, it's just great that we can stop the opportunity to just get on track early on. I mean, I put this firsthand, that it's that early intervention, it's IEPs, to, to really make sure that there's a best possible chance for success. So thank you for what you're doing.
Thank you.
And to all of our teachers and staff who made the most... Okay. Next up, we have item seven point two. Board report on after-school programs and early childhood development center for Shelley Peterson, Assistant Superintendent of the Special Services, and Vanessa Carroll, Director of ASB and CC.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to have Vanessa be here to speak about our two programs that she oversees, the after-school program and our early childhood development center. She joined us last October in the midst of tremendous transition with our after-school program and our early childhood development center. And she's done a phenomenal job really working with a highly talented staff to rebuild those programs so that we can service more and more children post-pandemic, as we know we're greatly affected by the pandemic and programs. So Vanessa's done a fantastic job, and I'm excited to be able to share with you.
If you'd be there, members of the board, okay? Very fortunate to be able to share this as a teacher who's like... So if I just go right into it, I want to announce that we had record numbers for our summer camp. We increased by maybe a hundred students. And you might remember that four last, last year were in summer camp. We had the four more students, and we were very lucky to have the number of students that we did, seven that could participate. And for this year, we were able to do amazing things. Builders were back, students started to do some leadership opportunities, worked together in challenge, challenge competitions, so it's really exciting. And we were also able to also reopen our early childhood summer camp program. So some of the families who were interested that were attending our Ashy Call's campus, and they really expressed the need and desire to have that summer camp program for the littlest learners in that district. So again, our enrollment increased about a hundred students for some. Our after-school program, we have started with huge numbers this year, where over six hundred students are already in the beginning of the year, which is a credible, a huge increase from last year, about maybe a hundred and one students. We're also really excited to announce that we've been able to offer over a hundred enrichment courses this year. So for the fall, we are up to a hundred and ten of enrichment classes that we'll be able to offer to all the students across the state, state, states. We are in a few weeks, so it's really, we're in a really unique position because a lot of our staff are college students that are focusing on going into education. So we get to have them for that short amount of time while they're still exploring that they love working with kids and if they're going to continue to enjoy. A lot of our, a lot of our staff, while we're always interviewing weekly is because they're going off to set up with their pursuing their teaching opportunities within our district or in other districts as well. And we have partnerships with local colleges and high schools. Over the summer, we were very fortunate to have some of the students that were seniors graduating and going into college participate and help us in some ways as well. Our early childhood development center, we were able to reopen, reopen Torreyville, which was hugely exciting for us because it hadn't closed during COVID. The numbers were really impacted during that time and just to the community and parents saying, hey, we really love, we miss Torreyville, we miss having that opportunity to send our students to the same location where the brothers and sisters participate. Also, with Torreyville, we can have that connection with early childhood inclusion program. So we have students that participate in the Sped preschool program that start with us during the morning time and then are able to go into the Sped preschool classroom. So it's really, it's really all streamlined, so the services that we're able to provide to students, some of our little kiddos that they pump in with maybe some speech concerns or developmental concerns, so maybe with Skittle, it's a little extra support, we're able to connect with that staff at Torreyville, so hopefully that evaluation process started earlier, you know, earlier evaluations. So again, just really excited to be able to offer different classes at Ashy Call's and at Torreyville. So much. Are there any questions?
Yeah, I think your, your report, my first one, I don't know, one of my questions is, so we have this jumping moment, and do you know out of the six hundred and twenty-three, how many are kindergarteners?
Kindergarten, probably, I would say off the top of my head, it's our largest group. So it's always the biggest historically district that we provide services to. I'm thinking maybe a hundred and twenty, sixty or so?
Okay, so are they going to stay with us after the first six weeks, or will you just pass?
So there's some families that are only accessing the services for the first, just a better, um, stays in, twice a week. And then they will no longer participate with us, but I would say probably about seventy-nine percent of the kindergarteners are going to stay with us.
Okay, great. And then I did want to ask about the, you mentioned, I guess I'm a little confused. So there's two different programs for the special education students and the general education students, are being together one full day?
So for our early childhood program at Torreyville, is we have early childhood centered tuition fees. So the little kiddos that are participating with us in the morning, that are receiving special education services in the afternoon time, their families are reaching out to us because they need that extended time of care. So they come with us in the morning, and then they go to participate in the Sped preschool and afternoon.
I'm sorry, I'm not understanding. So are the general education students and the special education students in the same rooms together all the same?
Are the families that are participating in the tuition fees program, the Sped students are the general students?
Did you want to clarify something?
I just wanted to clarify, those are two separate programs. So Vanessa's program does have students that has, have IEPs, may have students that have IEPs, but we also have our special education inclusion preschool program where we have community friends who are attending the program, really to be there as peer models for the students with IEPs. So that's separate from the early childhood development program, which is tuition-based.
Maybe I need to see it.
I'm trying to think of a, a better way to explain it. So we have one, one classroom that, that is they're making extra care, so it's like, I would, like, you're paying for private preschools. So those families that, you know, participate in private preschool, their student may have IEPs, and they're, they're reaching out to us to write that they're for their student practices, preschool, or their IEP services.
I'm not too sure if they have an IEP.
If they participate in that.
That's correct. That's the free and appropriate public education. So our preschool, where the students are receiving special education preschool classroom programming, that program is free to students that have IEPs.
If they have an IEP, and we have a preschool?
There, that is an extended program outside of the services they receive through the IEP. What they receive through the IEP is free. Those are free services. So for example, if, if a student was receiving thirty minutes or sixty minutes of speech therapy, they would come in for their speech therapy at no cost, but some of those students also attend the early childhood program because parents choose for them to be there for tuition.
So we don't have a preschool program for special education students that runs from, let's say, like eight to two thirty?
We have our, the program that my dean, that my dean was referring to is that it also happens to be at the... We have our, the program that my dean, that my dean was referring to is that it also happens to be at the campus of Torrey Hills, so that makes it a little more confusing. But they, that program is specifically designed for students with IEPs who require a more specialized program than, for example, the students who are accessing speech therapy. And we have as part of that program, an inclusion model. So in that program, we have students who come in to the program and attend as community friends. They are separate and distinct from the early childhood program.
Yeah, I guess what would probably help, I mean, how many, because most of your preschool students with IEPs are probably speech, is that correct?
We, we do have quite a few who receive speech therapy in the three to five-year-old range, but we also have programs, we have classrooms, three classrooms for students who require more intensive.
I know that, but I think you have a lot of students that just come in for speech. They might come in for an hour or so or 30 minutes. And so students, if they wanted to stay longer, that's what you're talking about, and so they get paid for a full day.
I guess what I'm not understanding, if they qualify for services, if they have an IEP, then?
Well, they get the services, where speech is only usually 30 minutes or an hour, something like that. And so you drop them off, they do their speech, you come pick them up unless you want them there all day and you pay for the rest of the day. You don't pay for 30 minutes to an hour of speech therapy. And I think that's where, I think there's a lot of parents coming, are they going to pass?
It's actually more of the other way around. If the student is in early, is in ECDC program, they can still access speech services. But they would, they, there are students that are in the early childhood development center program who may also attend a speech session at their school or need additional support and attend the morning program with early childhood development center and then attend the evening afternoon program in the special preschool program. But they are two separate programs.
An example, so we have the class over at Ashley Falls. We have a couple little kiddos that if they've got their speech, they're still already participating with their family needs care from layer to layer time. The speech therapist will come and work with the student, give them a, with the classroom for 30 minutes and then bring them back because their family is working and they need that every night.
But those students don't qualify for an entire day of preschool.
They qualify for the speech services.
Right, as part of that least restrictive environment, those students would receive their, their special education services for speech that they're eligible for, but they would not be, they don't require the more intensive full day of special education preschool.
Thank you. And then my last question is, how, I mean, if you could give some kind of guest estimate number, how many students are able to identify that need some kind of supportive services? When they're like three, you know, you're identifying them early, how many are people to identify?
Vanessa, I can, and they're really, we, I would say the answer is we would identify all of them. We don't have a number, but Vanessa's team is very, very skilled at contacting and working with the special ed teams whenever there is a question of a student needing an additional support. So then that student would be referred to the special education team for an assessment.
But it does happen? I just don't know.
It does, I don't know the, the number and it changes annually. And students become eligible for the special education program as they turn three years old.
Okay, thanks. And I know that you have a new infographic that you put up, say, and maybe similarly for the early childhood education I haven't read this section in detail, but maybe just to explain, make sure it's explained, that's clear for parents who might want to access this. Exactly the difference between the two programs, so I know where I can hit it. Thank you. Okay. We are item 8.1, order report 2022-23 priority actions.
Good evening. I am here to introduce, as always, at the beginning of the year, the priority actions for the year that we are embarking upon. So attached to the agenda and what you know, each year we actually set us, articulate priority actions for that current school year that are in alignment with our five-year long-range objectives and get us to our vision for the unrelenting pursuit of the extraordinary school experience and our mission to invent genius and empower students to advance the world. So tonight I will share with you overall some of the main categories for our priority actions for this year. You can see them specifically, all of them in the attached version of the draft priority actions. You can see here that our first lever and our first main category is a strong academic core and high-quality instruction. Academic core is the foundation on which all of our school experience develops. When we, when we think about high-quality instruction, we think about the, those instructional elements that connect the teacher actions with student performance. So these are the areas within that category that you will see priority actions written for for the year 2022, 2023. And these are all familiar, there are some of these that you've even heard about tonight already. So for more specific information as to exactly what is it that we will be targeting this year, you can look at the priority actions. And as always, either I or some of our team will be coming back to the board throughout the year to give status updates on our progress toward these priority actions. Lever two is skills that matter most. We've identified the onset of our current strategic plan, skills that matter most as far as the skills that children need to be successful as they, as we help to lay the groundwork for today and their future. So these are the skills that we need to be, is helping them with now so that they are successful in school and so that they are prepared for whatever future it is that they want to pursue. And this year, we have some, a couple of particular areas we're focusing on. The piece about inclusion for all students, the equity, making sure that children get what they need and understanding the needs of our diverse population. We also continue to target and are targeting this year design thinking and making sure that our experiences for our children are meaningful and standards aligned. So as we move through the year, that will be a focus for us this year. Lever three is our environment, we've already heard some of that tonight. It is one of our big three levers because we know the environment that children exist within is the entire experience that they have when they come to our schools, what is it that they experience. And so this year, we are looking at environment as those spaces within the, within the interior of our schools as well as the outdoor learning spaces. So how do we actually make those environments actually responsive to the needs of students, actually fit the needs of teachers so that teachers and students are able to accomplish, accomplish and personalize what each child needs to be successful? And we've seen incredible means already throughout the last four years of this strategic plan and our work each year to transform our environment so they are responsive to the needs of children. And it has been incredible to see the results of that happening every day in our classrooms and the input from our teachers has been incredibly instrumental and impactful. We have supporting priority actions in all of these areas. So I will be speaking in just a moment about our strategic planning, that is one of our supporting priority action areas. Student well-being and social relations, funding, facilities, and communication continue to be all highly important in our district and there are priority actions in each of those areas as we highly prioritize the well-being of our children, the well-being of our staff, the physical stability and health of our district, making sure our facilities are high-functioning and meeting the needs of everyone and making sure that our communication is timely, in the moment, transparent, and inclusive of all of our educational partners. These are three of our great new students that actually happens to be at the Citi Sky. So we're excited about this year. This is year five of the strategic plan that we're currently in. I will in a moment be talking about embarking in our process for our new strategic plan. It is very exciting as we look each year and we work with these educators, our teachers, our parents. We do big surveys throughout each of our school years to find out priorities from our parents. We have focus groups with our students, with our teachers to find out priorities and needs. And it's exciting to see the amount of progress that has been made in the last five years. I will tell you, I am incredibly complimentary to our staff because in the midst of that, we've had three, made, three years majorly impacted by a worldwide pandemic. So to be able to say that the accomplishments that have been made have been made in spite of being forced to deal with the constraints of a pandemic and to look at how can we continue to move ahead. I am continuing to be complimentary of our teachers and staff members' commitment to our children because they have cared so much about our children from day one. They have shown up throughout every year of this strategic plan to do what is right and best for children. And I am very, very grateful to everyone's commitment, teachers, support staff, and the leadership on all of the progress that has been made thus far. And this year is going to be another great year, year five of our current strategic plan.
Questions about the priority actions?
No, I just wanted to say that my son, he's sort of kindergarten, loves the outside of the grassy area. He always comes home and says, oh, today we have a little outside, so I definitely wanted of the environments. And even the inside though is beautiful, it's amazing.
Yeah, and for anyone who has the agenda open at home or you can access it online, but the whole priority action document is in the agenda. There's so many items here and then throughout the course of the year, we'll do a deep dive into most of these at some point. So it's, it's quite undertaking and thanks everybody who makes all of this happen. Okay, I think we're ready to move on to strategic planning process, which is 8.2.
I'm very excited to talk with you this evening about our strategic planning and actually to give a little bit of insight as to where we are in the process and our thinking around it because we are in the planning stages for the process. And so to be able to share with you our current thinking and to get some input from our board is the objective for my, my speaking with you tonight. So we intend that this strategic planning process will include a collaborative process focused on creating a common understanding of what our district wants to achieve and what we need to do to meet our long-range goals and to realize our vision. So as we look at that, this is one of our priority actions from, as I just mentioned in the previous presentation. When we look at this, we are, one of our priority actions is to actually identify the process for the creation of this new long-range plan. So as we think about that, this, we've identified what we believe are some of the steps this year, in our current year, that we need to go through in order to end up with an actual long-range strategic plan that we intend will begin in the year 2023. So as we think about strategic planning, we know that we want it to be a cycle of participation with all of our educational partners. So this includes input and feedback throughout the process from our students, of course, our parents, teachers, support staff, community members, all of those people who will be engaged throughout the process. We are thinking about how will we measure impact? So what are some of those metrics that we will use to actually measure what we're doing and is it, what kind of an impact is it having? We're thinking, and we know when you think about what our strengths and growth, growth areas are based on what we're setting forth to accomplish with our vision and mission. As we go through this strategic planning, we know that part of that process will include through all of this input and collaboration, a real collaborative effort on the part of everybody to come to what are some of those themes that are coming out and what are our long-range goals as a district? And then obviously, we want to develop an action plan, a reporting structure, and to articulate the metrics that we will use. So in thinking about all of this, we think about how, how will we involve, you know, some of the things we're, we're thinking about right now is how will we involve people throughout the process so that it is open and collaborative and so that at certain points in time, it will involve the right people? For example, sometimes our teachers will have very specific input, a particular part of our plan, a part of our strategic thinking that we might need to pull in a, you know, a group of teachers. And so we're thinking about how does that involve a lot and then specialize in ways that we do specialize in order to get the right input from our, from our stakeholders as we go through the planning process? And we definitely want to be thinking in a way that find how do we get people to help us to think about our vision and mission, our long-range plans? And then how do we involve people throughout the entire process as we're measuring what we're doing and how it, how it has an impact? So that's what we're currently looking at right now. We intend to, as at the next steps, we're right now looking at who some, are some potential facilitators, companies that can help us, help guide us and facilitate this strategic planning process through the fall months. We're also looking at the timeline and that will be, obviously dependent on the facilitator, the consulting group that we use that will also provide some input as to how do we, with our whole of involving our educational partners and having a variety of ways to measure and get input and feedback, how would that look throughout the entire process? So the timeline will also be developed along with the process and this group, this facilitator, company, consulting group. So I would expect in September, I will be able to come back to you, the board, with some recommendations from us, the staff, about what would be a good structure to use as far as a facilitator and a company at that time. We're excited for, you know, the next five years or whatever it ends up being, we'll have some newly articulated long-range goals, we know that. And we're excited to have as many people involved as possible and excited to put some actual now definition around what the structure looks like as we go into the fall.
So this is the meeting where we talk about the plan to make the plan. And it's kind of the beginning of a discussion and hopefully over the next month or so as folks are digesting this first step of the strategic planning that there's an opportunity for people to send emails or to contact the district with any suggestions as to kind of effective ways to, to reach the goals that you articulated about open and collaborative process and how to do it. We're always trying to figure out what's the best way to get feedback, what are the different vehicles? There are so many ways to do it. So it'll be interesting to see the recommendations you come up with at the, in September in conjunction with any consultant by then for how that might work. But also we invite the community to, to weigh in with their ideas so that we can make sure that the design of the process is something that can involve everybody and be, to be the goal that you mentioned, a big, open and collaborative. Question, you know, with an eye toward just transparency, maybe it's a question to answer the next meeting, that how, thinking about how to share the feedback that gets collected in a transparent way throughout the process so that everybody has the benefit of thinking through whether they attend a meeting or not, how, how can the information be shared throughout the process as we work toward the goal of actually developing a final plan? If that's, if it's honest on a noun, it's fine, otherwise it's something to consider. Definitely.
So I mean, you keep talking about the facilitator, aren't them just facilitators for a strategic planning process? I'm looking at what I've asked for on the spring with the climate survey and getting a company that can give us a good climate survey. Because that's what you need to be able to figure out where the lay of the land is, the state of the land here in our district. And then using that data is what we'll be able to put forward in this strategic planning process. So you do need to get state, you know, get feedback from the various stakeholders in our district with a well-designed climate survey, you know, teachers, parents, community members, and what's the state of the district? members, and what's the state of the district, where are we? And so that's what I'd like to see, I'd like to see a contract for that part. And then we talked about facilitator and this is the process, but I think we need to get a good handle on the state of everything and what's working really well and what needs to be improved and get that data and then we throw that into the, what we had in the past with these fire strategic plans. I think we discuss that data and that piece of art and figure out what we, what to implement and are we able to get to the goals? So that's what I'd like to see.
Yes, and that's what, yes, and that's what we've been thinking as far as responsive to that part of the input, we have been considering that to be part of what we would move through in our process for facilitator, facilitator company. Is it the same company? Is it someone different? How does that work? As you said, Scott, what's actually scientifically done? And how often, what is it measuring? We really have focused in on what are the metrics that we want to measure? I think that's what you're talking about as well because that has to be clear before you start out to measure anything. And so assistance with that will be very important and to have it scientific and to have it be part of the entire process is very important.
Yeah, there are companies that do that. You just have to, you know, try to, to get any company that has gone through and does a climate survey, you know, of their staff or their business. You know, we are a business, the business of educating students. So we should be able to get a company that can know how to design those questions and know how to get feedback, you know, health of the district, happiness, you know, are we accomplishing our goals, you know, are we doing it in the correct way or not? And so those are the questions that I'd like to be able to see. Like I said, all the stakeholders, teachers, parents, community members, so that we get broad-based, broad-based art education.
Yeah, I agree with you, definitely the survey of all the different constituent groups and I think we've all said that that makes sense to get the baseline of data. I would take it rather than just climate, you know, it's measuring toward goals that we, you know, that help us to achieve our vision other than just like generic climate.
Well, I mean, yeah, in terms of climate, what are we doing well and what are we, what good, good, this would be to me and that's, you know, if there is some frustration, then I'd like to be able to use that app because that's something we can make the district better, stronger, and forward. And there might be something that I know there are a lot of things that we're going to achieve in the world and I'd like to be able to see that. So it's just, it's a broad-based measure of where we are as a customer.
Well, the great thing about strategic planning is you get to set a whole new set of long-range goals. And the only way you set long-range goals, as you're talking about, is to determine what you want to get better at.
Right.
You don't have a goal, it's not something you want to get better at. So that's what it's all about. And I think absolutely looking to where's our baseline, what are the high, you know, what are people currently valuing and what's the input we're currently getting? How do we make that scientific? Those are all things we're looking at and important as we move through the process of strategic planning and selection of, you know, facilitator company. Maybe it is somebody different or the same who helps us with the metrics and determining, you know, how we're going to measure our goals. So we're excited about that and it's exciting, it's thrilling to be caught with the next five years of planning. Long-range goals should be big, it should be what you're getting better at.
Thanks, Holly. Just, you know, you as our superintendent, what are a couple themes or long-range goals that you think right now could say are, you know, definitely part of this plan?
Well, one of the things that's definitely, that has come out for sure is a sense of, you know, how is our, how does this school district belong to the community? And how do we, as a community, impact the world that our children are living in? And how do we make our schools as positive and productive as they can be for our children and have an impact on the greater world? I can tell that I'm influenced also by knowing our children. This generation of children very much cares about the world and actually giving to the world in a very philanthropic way. And I think that we need to be looking at this generation of children and understanding that they care a lot about that and perhaps less about some material things that generations before them have. So it will be interesting to me to see how that kind of a theme, because that's what the research about the current generation is showing, but how that kind of a theme starts to emerge when we get input from our students as well as, as you were saying, Scott, from all of the other educational partners that we have. So keeping it focused on our kids will be really important because this is for them and thinking about long-range goals for them is different than thinking about long-range goals for generations prior.
It's exciting. Okay, thank you. We look forward to hearing more and to hear how the folks involved. We are at 9.1 Board Report Facilities Update with Crystal Hanty, Assistant Superintendent Business Services, and Carlos Avlos, Director of Maintenance Operations and Facilities.
I have a recent video and I, I don't think that I, we had two stamps on it, make sure that it goes and then want to start the presentation and then how we not have that. So I'm going to have the awkward transition occur right now rather than mid-way.
Anyone can do it. You can't just start.
All right. Thank you, President Halpern, members of the board, Assistant Clerk. This evening, we will be giving our facilities update. Again, Crystal Hanty, Assistant Superintendent Business Services, and with you is our Director of Maintenance Operations and Facilities, Carlos Avlos. So this evening, I'll give an update on the major projects in the district at Delmar Hills Academy Modernization, Civic Sky School, Delmar Hills School Rebuilt. And Carlos is going to share about our summer projects and some of the great work that's been going on around the district. So we'll start with our Delmar Hills Academy Modernization. As we've shared, we have done some previous community planning sessions and some of the main work that needs to be done around geotechnical investigation and site survey. We was just talking with our secret consultants in moving forward and working through the sequel analysis. And we shared that the cost system was over budget, but we've also been working with our architects line office to look at how can we adjust some of those initial plans that we brought to the community and make some updates? So we are continuing with that design update. We will be bringing back some ideas to the community to share based on that update and we'll bring it to the board and we'll be able to bring to the board updated design for inputs and then approval of the projects for both the design and our sequel analysis. So we look forward to continuing that work and hopefully being able to bring some more information to the Delmar Hills community later this fall and then come to the board right after that. And then as we look at Civic Sky School, as we shared, we're very excited to have the school opening last week. We are scheduling a formal brick cutting intended at least for September 14th of the, we are finalizing days. And we are anticipating the kitchen completion, I think now sooner than November. So we may complete that in September, October. And then we will be moving forward with our next steps with the kitchen. As you know, we'll talk a little bit about universal meals, but we'll be able to open that for use as we move into the new year. I do have a little video to show an overview of how we have Civic Sky finished off. I think if you could view there, it's got the solar arrays up on the roof, which is now up and running. Very exciting to see that up and running. You have to think about it, we started May 17th, 2021, and we're opening in August of 2022. So wonderful job by our architect, our builders. It's been exciting to get into that school and if you look at the beautiful entrance now, but also just walking through and these big openings into the classrooms, first day of school, we have students working in the classroom, students working in outdoor environments, and just the energy and the quick adaptation to the new environments has been amazing. And one of the best quotes I got, I just walked through on the first or second day when students and teachers were collaborating, and the key thing was just how happy they said the kids were. So the kids enjoying and happy in the environment and so it's been wonderful to see that up and running. With Delmar High School rebuilt, we are still stocked. We are, we have dates for our negotiations, we have some next steps. We also have, I just was informed yesterday evening to be finding about permission to move forward without power of the fall repair work. So we've contacted the builder and what we're going to move forward. As you know, we had started the outfall repairs, but we stopped, we're in the middle. I've been concerned each time there, there's thunder clouds to the east, it might get rain on the coast. We're very happy to go to move forward. It's been a bit of a slog to get there, but now that we have that permission, we are moving forward as quickly as we can. The authorization was received yesterday. We are moving forward with it as quickly as we can get things set up with subcontractors. So I've been talking with the public, I mean, to report that these big copies done. And then as you shared, we've been working with our council to move forward with the steps in the court of appeal that will come September 15th and with our hearing with the lawsuit against the city of San Diego to move forward and move past that juncture and get that project back up and running. And then for summer projects, I'm going to hand it over to Carlos.
Good evening, President Halpern, board members, Assistant Clerk. It's my pleasure to report to you the summer projects that we completed this summer and all the ongoing work that our team has been contributing to. So we started off with the old renovations to the Second Morish School and Delmar Hills Academy. We modernized 44 classroom to the modern learning studios. We did playground upgrades at Carmel El Del Mar and Ashley Falls School and then a quick cafe to implement our universal meal program. So to remind our community and the needs that they need, after hours to have some sort of free space within the community, we decided to do half of the field over at Delmar Hills to make sure that they had access to a field space, you know, throughout the summer and not take it completely offline. So that worked out well, you know. Thank you to the principals to be communicating that with the community and making sure that that allows us to do some of the work and get the field traffic over at Delmar Hills. And then at Second Morish, we did the upgrades, certain replacement over at the Kinder and Primary Fields. Again, keeping the community in line and making sure we have the green space open for events of the upper grade, the larger fields that open to some of our after-school programs and supports for able to use those fields and will be doing some of that work probably this next summer. And these will be open and ready to use at Bradfield that they were dating. So very excited to have those open up for our schools. Next is our modern learning studios. So we did a four room classroom, new paint, new carpet, new furniture, ripro walls, new art studios. The picture there is on the right, that's Ocean Air's art studio. You know, you can see the new floor that was done, new furniture that was implemented. And as Chris mentioned, all the kids just excited for the new space and the new furniture that they, that they came into this new school year. And a huge thank you to all of the departments with, you know, the tremendous coordination with getting furniture in and furniture out, you know, our instructional services department, business services department, technology, the social staff, the maintenance department. Just, it was a tremendous effort for everyone to make sure that our classrooms were ready to go in. Teachers came back on August 8th and then for the first day of school. And then continuing on with our summer projects, the playgrounds over at Ashley Falls and Carmel El Del Mar. Like all of the other industries, they've been impacted with some of the manufacturing delay. So, you know, the contractors have moved forward, have completed as much as they can. I am happy to report that this coming Monday, they'll be pouring the rubber surface at the, one of the Carmel El Del Mar's playgrounds or kiddles to, you know, begin using that towards the end of next week. And then we anticipate completion of all the playgrounds in, within three weeks from Monday's date. And then lastly, another project that we did is, you know, putting in some of the infrastructure work, you know, working with the electrical and the installers to get our quick cafes installed at all our school sites. And again, huge coordination between business services and maintenance to get these done and ready for our universal meals programs. Thank you. Any questions?
Already for our classrooms is a lot. And I see them and they look amazing. The kids are really enjoying this space. So thanks for that huge endeavor. And the food cafes, which I think we're going to hear about next. So excited to see the vision that has come to fruition, right? After all these years, that's great. Do you have any questions on that? Okay, thank you very much for that update. Okay, so that brings us to 9.1 Board Report and Universal Meals, still with Crystal Hanty and now Tiana Barton, Director of Business Services.
Good evening again, President Halpern, members of the board, and Assistant Superintendent Clerk. So this evening, we will be presenting on our new universal meals program and I'm happy that we have Tiana Barton, Director of Business Support Services here to help me. We'll look at the universal meals background and what brought us to this, some of the planning preparation and our implementation nine steps. So just looking at the background, the previous law, previous to really last year, required each school district to provide one nutritionally adequate free or reduced priced meal during each school day. So when you think about that, free and reduced lunches were all that were required to provide and up until this last year. The current law, which came with last year's budget trailer bill, established the universal meals program starting this school year. And that program required all valets, all school districts to offer two meals, in fact, no lunch, to all students and must be offered to all students at no cost. So a big change for a district like ours where we went from a fairly small number of required meals to being able to serve all students who would like it to. We did a presentation last year on planning and we had some obstacles. So I wanted to bring back the obstacles that we shared just one year ago. Those included no central kitchen, no server room at the school sites, no warming kitchens at school sites, no designated centralized area to serve large numbers of school lunches, a small one-person CNS department, a lack of infrastructure that impacts our options for providing school lunch, and that current, at that time, families paid an all-inclusive price for lunch. So building from that, as you can see, we had no program other than choice lunch, which really was running much before us and we were kind of tracking. So we, our team has done an exceptional job. Tiana is going to share some of the work and we also have to share Michelle Bothy and our departments has done an extraordinary job. And then across the district, people pitched in to help serve lunch, to be a part of it. So going from nothing to a full program has been amazing and Tiana is going to be able to share you about the process.
Thank you, Chris. Good evening, President Halpern, Assistant Clerk, and members of the board. As Chris mentioned, we, a year ago, we were in a very different place in analyzing what obstacles were, but we immediately took action and here we'll see some of those actions that took place. We identified the staffing needs that were required for our program, the Child Nutrition Services Program operating under Universal Meals. And we have hired several child nutrition services drivers to assist with delivering those meals to school sites. And also we have the installation of the quick cafes. And that bid began immediately at the beginning of 2022. And it was a process to make sure that each site got a custom fitting for their site. As you can see, the amazing logos for each site and every school site layout is different. And so each quick cafe really is tailored to the needs of the students on that campus. In addition to that, we also created a partnership with the outside food vendor, One Kitchen Collaborative, and they are located in Oceanside. And they prepare all of our student meals as we don't have the kitchen up and running yet. And they have been a great partner in prepping for everything to get going as of the first day of school last week. In addition to that, we also acquired a point of service software and that is important for the trackability of all of the students that are getting meals and being able to submit those numbers for reimbursement under the universal meals program. And also an enrollment into the school breakfast program. As Chris mentioned, last year, we were only providing lunches under the National School Lunch Program. And with universal meals, we're required to provide two meals. So we are now enrolled in the school breakfast program along with the So we are now enrolled in the school breakfast program along with the National School Lunch Program. And still in process for getting the approval from CDE for that FSMC, our Food Service Management Company. And that's who would likely come in and operate our kitchen once the kitchen is up and ready to go. And we've had several parent communications, parent input. We are so happy that we've received several comments and suggestions in our parent surveys and it's been a really great experience to be able to communicate with the community in that way. And moving on to implementation, all of that preparation brought us to day one, which was Monday of last week. We were able to serve breakfast meals and lunch meals to all students across all nine schools at eight physical sites. Prior to that, when staff came back, we had several training sessions to make sure that they felt prepared for the large scale program that we're now operating. And so there's just a couple of photos there to enjoy for you. One of the biggest impacts you can see on this slide is the increase in meals that we've served. So in comparison to May of last year, the entire month of May, we served 16,500 total meals for the entire month. In the first week of school, the first five days of school, we served 14,898 meals in one week. And so as you can tell, the students are participating, they like the meals. We even had influx as the days went on. So by Friday was actually our highest numbers. So friends are telling friends and they love the food. So that's really exciting to see. And just a little bit more to capture how it looked on that first week of school, this really, the way that the quick cafes are set up, the equipment that's provided in each one of the quick cafes is set up to allow for student agency, allow them to pull the food from the trays themselves and allow for them to participate in that entire process and own that process. So as you can see, some of the kiddos are grabbing trays and they get a student ID card as well at the beginning of the line and they go through an entire process and they quite like the checkout process at the end. So they love it. It's been very successful and they will tell you if there's a meal on a day that they said, I didn't quite care for that. So we take all of that into consideration, but those are very nutritious meals catered to our students. And then just some next steps. As this program, as I mentioned, is a large program, we continue to assess the staffing and site support needs. And this has been a cross-functional collaboration across the board, as with many things in our district, always a collaboration. So HR has been instrumental in that as well as maintenance operations and facilities and technology and instructional services. Everybody has been out at the sites to assist with serving lunches this first week of school. So that's exciting as well. We are also working on right sizing ordering and what that means is now that we have some historic figures, last week's figures can now consider, be considered our historic figures where we didn't have figures previous to that. So the goal is to eliminate as much waste as possible. And so that's why we did the parent survey initially. And now that we're starting to see a trend of what foods the kids like and how to order that, then we, our goal is to reduce that waste. In addition to helping to reduce waste, the beginning steps of a recycling program is each school site has a share table. And what that is, is a student can walk through the whole process of the meal, have a compliant meal, check out at the end. And if they don't want their meal or if they don't want their piece of fruit, they have the ability to drop that at the share table. Anything that's unopened, they can drop at the share table and it's exactly that, share it with other students on the campus where they can then come during that lunch time and if they want extra milk, it's there and available for them. So that eliminates a full carton of milk going into the trash can just because the student didn't want to have it that day. And then also just continuing to work through the request for proposal for that FSMC and the planning on opening our district centralized kitchen in January or summer. Happy to answer your questions.
Another big undertaking. It's pretty impressive and it seems like those have been pleasantly surprised by how the students, but that was, that was great. Could you just go over, give us the cost structures program, how this is coming out of general plan, how this is being reimbursed, just all the details?
So we have budgeted $300,000 as a hit to the general fund for this first month of January. We'll have a better idea as we get through these first couple of weeks as to is that the right number and we'll be able to update that. And we'll certainly come to first interim with potential changes if we see a change in the impact. As part of looking at minimizing waste as well, I mean, it's both being environmentally conscious, not wasting food and also saving money. So we want to make sure we have enough food so we can serve all of our students, but not over by the point where we're wasting money and wasting food.
Okay, and how about reimbursement from the state? Is there reimbursement from the state for this program?
There is reimbursement from the state for all students. And so we will have a reimbursement, I don't have the exact number, but it's in the range of $4 per meal. And so we are, that's why the tracking is so important. So it is important that we track, it's important that we do it in a manner that will pass an audit so that we get the funds back for the meals that we're serving. So that's why if we're calling a point of service system, it was a point of sale, but now there's no sale, there's service. But we do need to track and then it tracks whether the students, which student is eating. And so then we get, you know, you get a little more funding if it's a free reduced meal versus a not free reduced meal, but that all gets tracked and then gives us the reimbursement so that we get paid for the lunches that we're serving.
Is that software something that the state is providing to all school districts or do we just go up and find our own software?
No, unfortunately it is not. We went out and found our own and we are using the same software that San Diego uses. So we did, we went through a process, but it's also beneficial to be in the same software that we did in San Diego as well.
But there's no reimbursement from the state for the software?
Not that I know of.
So it looks like you're only, you're about, say, 60, 65% of the students are getting lunches right now. Where do you think it's going to end up? Because I would expect it to be much lighter than this ultimately.
Yes, so just based off of last week's numbers, 28% of the students are getting breakfast and 69% of the students are getting lunch. So we would anticipate as the numbers grew over the last week, that we will continue to grow over the next coming weeks.
And how does that impact all of the, I assume we're going to have a lot more waste now as you're assuming that you're trying to make sure there's enough meals for everybody, but if you're only having, you said 69% of the amount of people are getting lunches. So you expect the waste to be less as we move forward more and students are getting lunches?
Yes, so we actually report to OKC how many lunches we would like to purchase every two weeks. And we do that in the beginning so that we can try to eliminate that waste. So as we're seeing, we will stick at that 69% purchase. And we also have, we will get a couple extra just to make sure that there's no food, no students that don't have food for the day. And what happens is, OKC, they deliver the current day lunch and the following day breakfast at the same time. So if there was ever a situation where a current day lunch was no longer, that was a student in need, which we don't anticipate, then that next day breakfast can definitely be used immediately for that student.
Okay. And then how many different options do they have in toward for the lunches?
You know, we have two options right now. And the second option being an allergy friendly option. So vegan dairy free and peanut free, all allergies.
Okay, all right. All right, thank you.
So just another question, I'm thinking about when we move to our own kitchen, will we be able to provide a similar types of meals and maybe have less waste because, I mean, how will it be different like I said this morning?
Yeah, well, we're definitely going to take all of the data for the next couple of weeks and see what those trends are for the kids, how, what they're eating and what they prefer. And if those are meals that our kitchen can provide, then those are the ones that we would be producing or trying to produce.
Okay. Okay, thank you for the update. And congratulations on a strong start. Okay, we're at 10.2. Board review and approval of the 2021, 22 unouted actuals for all of your funds with Chris Delante, the run out of services, and Mark Hahn, Director of Christmas Services.
Good evening again. We are very happy to be here tonight to share our 21, 22 unouted actuals. Just as a reminder, we came and fairly recently, we adopted the 22, 23 budget. At this point, we're looking back at our 21, 22 and the unouted actual for last year's numbers. So we will go through a general fund summary and we'll look at our revenues and expenditures. We'll look at the components of our income balance. We'll look at some historical data on revenue and expenditures as well as our property tax revenue. And then historical data on our special education spending. And we'll look towards our 22, 23 first interim and the summary of other funds. Before I start, I just want to thank Mark and our team who worked tirelessly. This is actually due to the county September 15th. And so just where our reporting lands, it's early in the mini districts and Mark has got a book on him and our team closing the books. And so I just want to thank the hard work that they put in to get unouted actuals together. So looking at our general fund summary, we're going to start with the revenue side and you'll see we've gone from $70.6 million at our estimated actuals to $72.5 million in unouted actuals. And it's for a difference of almost $2 million, but you'll notice the largest difference there under the other financial resources of about $1.65 million. And that is not present estimated actuals and it's related to our Apple lease for teacher and student devices. So that's where the bulk of that change comes in. We also have an increase in state revenue for serves on behalf, which is offset expenditures. There's a decrease in local income due to accounting adjustments to report fair market value cash and at the accounting of cash that's on hand is associated with some of the investments, they do an adjustment to fair market value each year. Sometimes it goes a little bit up, sometimes it goes down. And then as I shared, the increase in other financing sources due to our Apple lease. This is offset expenditures, but we are showing it here and we'll show it in the expenditures as well. As we look at the expenditures, we have gone from $70.1 million at our estimated actuals to $70.6 million in unouted actuals for a difference of about $500,000. I mean, you'll notice under that capital outback, the difference is the exact same, $1.649 million, and that is associated with that Apple lease. We also have some adjustments for final salary benefits that come in here. Every year, there are some adjustments that come in based to final salary, salary, final benefits, positions that may not have been filled for a certain period of time and things like that. So accounting adjustments for capital leases that were offset, and that was our Apple. We also had some of our base to amplify science tiers that were delayed, so they didn't hit our 21, 22 and they'll be in the 22, 23 budget. And special site and restricted program carryover that sites didn't spend, it will move on to the 22, 23 school year. So then as we look at this as a whole, we see an increase to our restricted, oh, sorry, I went a little ahead. So in our summary, we have again, 72 and a half million in revenues, $70.6 million in expenditures, $1.9 million increase in fund balance. And as you can see with our enrollment for at June of 22, 3,900 students, we have a revenue per student of about 17,000 and expenditures of just about $17,000 per student. So then we look at our ending fund balance and we see an increase to our restricted line due to some of the restricted funded funds that weren't spent. And these have multi-year ability to spend them. We talked about this before with Ridos Land when we look at the overall ending fund balance. You'll see that school site carryover, there's the science curriculum adoption and that will go to the amplified, it was pushed forward here. We have our social science curriculum that we are reserving for and are assigning for and some digital storage when we look at storage of some of the things that we have in our warehouse, old orgies and things like that, that we want to get into a digital form to make for better ability to access and dispose of when needed. And a slight increase to the minimum reserve policy and a slight increase to our 3% minimum reserve, which leads to a total unrestricted general fund of almost $16.9 million and the reserve percentage at 23.9%. So when we look at those components, I spoke through them as we went through there, but some of the reserves for future needs of the, again, the amplify science and paying for those in this fiscal year, social science. We do have in there, in some of that unassigned, universal meals implementation needs, we have unanticipated expenditures for facility repairs and emergencies, making sure that we have those available. And then we always look at our reserve economic for economic uncertainties of a community funded district. When we look at our reliance on property taxes and our very low state funding, we recognize the need to hold that high reserve for economic uncertainties. And we've seen the state in the past impact community funded districts when there's been downturns. So we want to ensure it's important for us to be prepared to weather such a situation and minimize any impacts to our instructional program. And then we just have a, so we can look at our revenue through a pie chart. You'll notice that as usual, our LCFF, the Patrol Funding Form, those sources are the highest, much of that is our property taxes. This also includes our serves on the half pass through contribution of almost $4 million this year. And that's the state contribution that's been offset in our expenditures. And on the expenditure side, we're showing it as a pie chart. We are of course a people business and so you'll see that the total net salary and benefits is 83%. We have the kind of large pension cost that also is part of that serves on the half pass through of, again, of the $4 million that comes through on the expenditure side as well. So just some additional highlights for our general fund. We did our annual contributions, the OPEP trust, to ensure that we're saving towards any of those impacts that may come down the line. We transferred money to the Fund 17 Special Reserve for Pacific Sky Schools, so we're prepared to start that school up and also to support the kitchen and the universal meals. And so there's some pieces we're using that for as well. We continue to transfer to Fund 14 for deferred maintenance so that we can ensure that the board has prioritized having funding through the bond and pass it and having the ability to maintain our facilities. For 21, 22, we continued to have class size reduction for grades four through six and we kept those classes a little bit smaller with funding coming from the general fund, added counselors and the addition of intervention specialists to support social, emotional as well as academic needs of our students. And as we talked about before, we renewed our Apple leases, providing a new teacher laptops to all of our teachers and district-wide iPads, both teachers and students. If we move to historical data, we will look at revenues and expenditures over time. And so as we look to revenues, you'll notice a larger federal revenue received in 2021 and that maroon bar in the second from the right. And so we have a larger thing, that was based on our resources that came through for COVID relief. So we saw that kind of increase in that 2021 year. And that's come back a little bit closer than normal, though it's a little bit higher as we've had some more funding as we look into 21, 22. As we look at expenditures, we have a fairly fine expenditures over the last two years as we've continued to fund our students at really close to 16,900 students in expenditures year over year. We've had fairly consistent teaching staff and expenditures to keep our class sizes lower. And then looking at property taxes, we have seen the growth decline over the last couple of years, but state funding that we would have received has stayed fairly flat in a darker blue. Some people equate community funded or basic aid districts as being rich, but the formula from the state would provide us significantly lower than districts that were not community funded. We'd be really severely underfunded if you look at the amount of funding we have there. And even with our tax revenue, yes, we still do receive less per pupil in some districts in our county and the state. So while we are pretty thoroughly in basic aid, I think it's important to note the low level of funding that our district received if we were state funded. that our district received if we were state funded. And then as we look at special education expenditures, you can see that we've spent more per student each year, topping out this year at almost twenty-three thousand dollars per student, about six thousand more than is spent on average in our districts. We continue to commit to our special education program. And as you spoke to, we identify our programs based on student needs and we pay for those programs to meet the needs of our students. And so unfortunately, this is not fully funded by the state or federal governments. And so kind of to the question that you asked earlier, Eric, we have, President Hopper, we have almost a million dollars in federal revenue that comes, that came in this last year, three point two million in state revenue. But the district contributes from our general fund, six million dollars in revenue. So we're contributing about sixty percent of the special education funding from the general fund that isn't funded through the state or federal revenues that we receive. So with that, I'm going to ask Mark to step in and talk about a little bit more.
Good evening, President Hopper, and members of the board and Superintendent, Dr. McLeary. Tonight, I'll present on our looking ahead to first interim and then our other funds. So when we look ahead towards first interim, we'll be bringing that at the December board meeting. We'll be reflecting all of our carryover balances, so those school site balances and our program balances that were in spend. When we look at our final staffing, we'll be updating the budget based upon the new school year staffing and adjusting the budget accordingly. We'll also be updating the budget based upon the final governor's budget that was adopted at the end of June. There's three large programs, one of which is ongoing, the Extended Learning Opportunities Program, and then two that are one-time in nature. And so at the May revise, sorry, the Extended Learning Opportunities Program, that one that's ongoing, that one's meant to provide enrichment opportunities for our unduplicated students who are English learners and are pre-reduced or foster youth students. And so that allows them to access our after-school program, the Up Charge, and also our summer camps. So it's meant to provide extra regular opportunities for them. And we'll be receiving about one point four million dollars for that program. At the May revise, the governor had initially proposed a large one-time discretionary block grant and also funds for deferred maintenance. But after negotiations with the legislature and the final adopted budget, it ended up being two restricted programs on a one-time basis. So the first one is the Learning Recovery and Emergency Block Grant, which we will be receiving about one point six million dollars. These funds can be used over six years, so through the twenty-seven, twenty-eight school year. And this is really to help with the long-term impact of COVID and recovery and for any learning recovery related to COVID. So reducing class size, expanding instructional time, or additional academic and pupil supports. And then the Arts and Music and Instructional Materials Block Grant, that one can be used over four years through the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. And this one, unlike the Learning Recovery one, does require a plan. So at a future board meeting, we will be bringing a plan as to how we'll be spending these funds. It's about two point four million dollars over the four years. And these funds can be used towards instructional materials, professional learning, building diverse book collections, COVID-related supplies, and also other operating expenditures. So when we look at our other funds, as we close out the year, we look at our Fund Thirteen, the Cafeteria Fund. We had a decrease in the fund balance that the general fund had to cover of about fifty thousand dollars. The Deferred Maintenance Fund, as Chris had mentioned, the board has prioritized our future facility needs after the bond program. So we have been contributing one-half of a percent of the property taxes. So we can see an increase to the fund balance here of about two hundred and forty thousand and a final ending fund balance of one point six million. Fund Seventeen is our special reserve that we've been reserving for the future operating cost of Pacific Sky School, our school number nine. And we had contributed one point three million last year. And so this has a balance of two point seven million, which we will be trying to help fund the universal meals also. Fund Twenty-One is our Measure M and M Bond Fund. We have two series, Series A and B. In May of twenty twenty-two, we issued Series B at sixty-four million. So we can see that revenue coming in. And then we have all the expenditures from the projects that we've been doing district-wise. So an increase to the fund balance of twenty-seven million. And this one has an ending fund balance of just under seventy-six million. And so in terms of our Measure M and M projects that have been completed last year, we replaced all the window blinds at Sage Canyon School. We replaced all the place structures at Sigma Ridge School. And then we also modernized learning environments throughout the district. And as far as work in progress, we have our three major construction projects. So Pacific Sky School, which is the new construction, rebuilt at Dunbar High School, and then the modernization at Dunbar Hills. And since our school ends early now at the beginning of June, we have a whole month that we'll have to reflect expenditures now. So we kickstart on our Ashley Falls School and Carmel Dunbar School playgrounds, and then as well as the modernization of the learning environments throughout the district. Our Fund Twenty-Five is our capital facilities funds. This is where we receive our developer fees when someone wants to build a new home or remodel their home. We collect developer fees, so an increase of about two hundred and thirty-four thousand. And we have a balance of one point one million. These funds are being reserved for the future modernization of Carmel Dunbar. Fund Thirty-Five was one that we had new at our adoption estimated actuals. This is a refund from reimbursement from the state for our partial modernization of Carmel Dunbar back in two thousand and fifteen. And in order to use these funds, we needed to, we need to be able to transfer them out to Fund Forty to allocate them towards facilities. So we zeroed out this one and transferred it to Fund Forty, which is next, our reserve for capital outlay. And so a majority of the revenue happens from that transfer, from that reimbursement of Carmel Dunbar. And then also excess overrun costs from the North City West refund that we get from there. We had a slight decrease in the fund balance. Some of the expenditures that we had in here were tech-related projects. So we're replacing our firewall, district firewall. We also purchased outdoor learning tables for all the school sites last year. And then we also made a deposit for the suite one oh three next door to our maintenance operation and facilities building. Fund Forty-nine oh one is our CFD ninety-five dash one. And this is really to cover our debt service payment related to Ocean Air and Torrey Falls school construction. And so there's a slight increase to the fund balance of five hundred thousand. And we have an ending fund balance of six point one million that can be used at those facilities. Fund Forty-nine oh two, our CFD ninety-nine dash one. We received Melrose revenue of two point three million. We had previously issued the bonds that will pay for the Pacific Sky School construction. So we had a balance from last year. So you can see that expenditures being paid out for related to construction. So we have a decrease in the fund balance of twenty-three million and there's about eleven million dollars left in this fund. Our Fund Sixty-three, which is our enterprise fund for our after-school program and our early childhood development center, we have an increase to the fund balance of about nine hundred thousand. This fund has, I would say, fully recovered from the pandemic. And so moving forward, we'll be investing into the program more. We already, we'll be increasing staffing. So we had to bring on the new staff for Pacific Sky School and then also additional office staff and some of the leads that at the school sites, adding additional leads district-wide. And then finally, we have Fund Seventy-Three, which is our trust fund at Dunbar Heights for the library there. We had a slight decrease in revenue in this one. We had to recognize interest, but then also due to that fair market value adjustment, it created a negative revenue. And so we still have about thirty-four thousand in that fund. That was our final one, so we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Okay, thanks, Mark. Any questions? I guess my first one is, so we've got these ongoing and one-time fund programs. What's our plan for tracking how those funds are spent and will those be presented to the board and to the board?
So we are, we're going to be developing. We've really just gotten these sort of final numbers. In fact, the numbers we had when it was first released are slightly different than the numbers we have now. One requires the arts and et cetera block grants, requires a plan that will be granted before approval. But then we'll be also updating on the learning loss plan as well. So we'll, we'll be developing how we're going to spend those and we'll be sharing that back out.
Okay, good. Yeah, I know one requires a plan, but I'm hoping that you'll.
Absolutely.
Right, because it's all great and we can track that spending, that's great. And then, let's see. The one that was moved, the state reimbursement that was moved, do we have to use that, those funds within a certain amount of time? Or can they just be on?
No, that's why we moved funds up on Forty so that they can be freed up and be used upon any of our facilities.
Okay, and then the Fund Forty-nine dash oh two, you said that was used for Pacific Sky, right? And then so there's already any balance there and what, what are we going to be using that for? Just ongoing expenses on Pacific Sky?
And it's also in that area is Sigma Ridge. So there's the ability to use those funds if there were other things that came up that we needed at Pacific Sky, but we also use those funds as we move into modernization or Sigma Ridge.
Just on that, I mean, those aren't actually restricted for Pacific Sky. There, there was a budget mechanism to, you know, to make sure we were saving enough money to afford the schools and things along. So I was also wondering about that, whether that should roll into Fund Fourteen or how should we do it?
So the Fund Seventeen Special Reserve, yeah. So as we are opening up Pacific Sky, our intention has always been to monitor at the beginning of the school year, see how that impacts the budget and then we would look at coming up if there is more in that fund than we need. Coming back to the board with suggested options for how we might use those funds for deferred maintenance. We could be looking at district priorities and how could we assign and use those funds.
And this might be a programming question, I guess, but do we, do you think there might be a need for a third ECDC location? I don't know, that's a question to be answered.
We would support construction services and ECDC and investigating and then looking at how that might be funded at Auburn.
I had a question. So the one-time funds, these block grants that we're getting, how are they going to be reflected in the, like, are we getting the funds? They're going to go into a restricted reserve and that's how we're going to be seeing them in the interim and so on?
Correct. So we have, honestly, there hasn't been much information besides, you know, that they're coming. But a way that's probably similarly how the educator affects them, this block grant, was we kind of get the money upfront and then make them spend it over multiple years.
Okay, so we'll, we'll see up here as a restricted reserve. So it might make the reserve look a lot higher than it really is just because that money is earmarked to be spent over four years or six-year time.
Correct.
So the, I was curious, because you showed the picture of the facilities on all the solar panels on Pacific Sky School. How's electricity in there? Are we zeroed out our electric bills for that?
We really haven't had a chance to. So it's just a monitoring one because there are also some things with SDG and getting it up and running. And so that'll be something very interesting to monitor over the next month and see how that impacts when we compare to a site of a similar size and then what our electrical bills are.
So is, was that designed to run the entire electric utilization at that school? Or are we overproducing for that school that we can apply to?
No, we, there isn't really much money in overproducing. So we looked at trying to maximize the ability to take care of the whole school, right? We worked with our solar consultants. So it should be at a scale that should get us pretty much as close to zero as we can. But that going way over, because if you go way over, it's really pennies on the dollar that you give back.
Yeah, I know that. I was, so we're billed on each school site. So if you were to put solar on a school site, you'd have to use it at that different site again.
Correct. It's on that meter. And so if we, we aren't able to share it to another meter.
Okay.
Just a question on the growth in property tax revenue. So I see that it's two point seven percent for twenty-one, twenty-two, projecting going forward.
We're actually projecting pushing to five percent for this year. I never really realized that earlier.
I believe that the budget of option, we budgeted about three and a half. But our final taxes have come in both closer to five, so we'll be bringing that up for center.
And how are you projecting past, past that year?
We're budgeting a little more conservatively on three percent.
Are you doing a detailed projection as far as new houses coming online? Because, you know, we had, it's been a big year for new properties coming into the district. Have you broken that out? At the time, we did a detailed, we hired a consultant, did an analysis of the exact property tax breakdown. How much do you have right now about what's coming in from new construction versus just increase in value existing?
We don't have a lot more coming online. So the, the bulk of our increase in property tax is going to be based on turnover in the market rather than on development. And that's why it's important that we believe to budget in a more conservative manner. Because if you look at this, three and a half percent, two point seven percent, it's crazy for realizing up to five for this year. But I don't think we can expect that we're going to consistently hit that five percent. So we want to make sure that we're budgeting in a manner that doesn't put us in a place where we're expecting money that we may not realize.
Okay, there are no more questions. Then we have to vote. So is there a motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two actual, uh, unattended actuals for all district funds?
I'll say it.
Alligator?
Aye.
Aye. The motion to approve the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two unouted actuals is passed. Thank you. And thanks, Mark, for making it happen with your team coming up. Okay, eleven point one board information staffed and we're going to update Ryan Stanley, Assistant Superintendent of Community Resources.
Good evening, President Hopper, members of the board, Dr. McLeary. This evening, it's my pleasure to be able to provide an update on enrollment and staffing across our district. So looking at our K through six enrollment numbers, our chart breaks down as far as how many are grade levels, how many sections we have across our district that go to our grade levels. I do want to talk about what that point five looks like because that might be something that stands out as significant. For example, on kindergarten, twenty point five sections to that point five were presented, we have to have a combo. In that case, that would be a K one combo. And so that point five chart is within our portion of that combination class. It's identifying the K through six total students at that grade level and then also identifying our average class size across the grade level. So looking at this chart here in the district where we value and appreciate having lower class sizes. So per our agreement with our Teachers Association, our cap is a reminder, our grade K through three is at twenty-two to one. And looking at our averages, you'll see that we're well below our cap. And then additionally, through direction of the board last fall, or not spring, excuse me, we were directed to staff at twenty-five for the lower grade, for the upper grades, the student grades four through six. So we can see that we have low end averages looking across. This evening, we also had been in conversations though about, in addition to our K through six students, we also had conversations about we have students, we have kids coming into our district within our ECDC program and our special education preschool. And so this chart is also capturing those students who are coming into our district as well. We include it at Ashley Falls and at Torrey. We, including at Ashley Falls and at Torrey Hills. And so this chart is capturing the total enrollment across school set, not just our K through six students, but also including those students who are in our preschool, special education classrooms, as well as our early childhood development center. One, I'm sorry, computer missed, but I did get to point out Pacific Sky on this slide. It's firstly, never excited to have Pacific Sky begin, but that's what 337 students says of right now. So Pacific Sky, opening with the boundaries you're aware of, where the overlay is with their new concrete, those sites that we've seen the biggest reductions in students as a result of Pacific Sky opening up are Ashley Falls and it's Sycamore Ridge. And then I can't be HR without seeing the great departmental staff. And so looking across our district, as of today, in total, we have an incredible group of 588 district employees at this time. So it's gone rise to 291 certificated physicians. So when we talk about our certificated physicians, we're talking about our classroom management, our certificated management, our C-plus specialists, our sixth-grade Spanish teachers, our TOSs, our special ed providers who require a credential in order to offer their services, such as our, our education specialists, our speech language pathologists, our psychologists. And then it also includes our counselors, our nurses. And then we also have a lot of support staff from on the classified side that helps for us. So when we talk about classified staff, that's when we're talking about our office support staff, our maintenance operations in facilities, our custodial support, our instructional aids, our PCBA, our occupational therapists, our technology support, our ECDC staff. And then this year, we also have a lot of classified hourly staff. So mainly our new duty folks to help us support our lunch service and then also those who are supporting our home maintenance classrooms across the district. So with that, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
I mean, I just have to marvel at the class sizes that we've got. K through three with average class size is below 20 to one for all of those grade levels. And then for fourth, fifth, and sixth, we're below 23 to one. But that's really incredible. And it's really exciting to see that the teachers can have, you know, a smaller number of kids to work with and hopefully increased educational outcomes.
And thank you. We've heard over and over again how much our community, how much our staff values those little class sizes in order to personalize instruction and provide the absolute best for our kids.
So how many combos do you have?
We have a total of three combination classes this year.
Only three, really? Wow, that's good. And I guess I can total of all the number of students here. So if you're involved by school site, you have included the special, the early childhood and SDC, or a prepaid rather. How many total students do we have just in, does it be K through six?
Yes. In our K through six, we have a total of 3,701 students in K through six. So we have 701.
Okay. That's down. Down quite a bit.
Dead now. It's down. Last year, we ended last year. Running closer. Yeah, we ended last year at 3,943 students.
Yeah, those are close to 4,000. Okay. And that kind of be expected to continue?
It's something that we're continuing to monitor. There are a couple of factors that are impacting our enrollment numbers across the district. I think first and foremost is we're recognizing there's the statewide trend of declining enrollment across the state. The Department of Education just recently noticed or noted, assuming that for the first time since the turn of the century 2000, K through 12 enrollment across the state fell from the state to below 6 million students. So we've definitely seen that trend statewide, and Delmar is also experiencing that. When we look at one of the other factors that's impacting our enrollments, I think we can witness this in our communities, the cost of housing. And with the cost of housing that is impacting the opportunities for houses to turn over, and that's something that we're continuing to, to watch. We're definitely not experiencing that typical turnover. We also are realizing the impact of COVID. Traditionally across our district, we have a number of families who move here either for work with universities or working with different companies where they won't be sent to work in this area. And due to COVID, we're not having as many workers that are being sent into this community and bringing their children. And then the fourth factor that's definitely impacting us is we're also seeing a decrease in enrollment across our district with the uncertainty in the delay of the building of Delmar Heights. So a number of years ago, before everything, Delmar Heights was a school of 500 kids. And as of right now, they have their enrollments over, just over 300 students right now. So we anticipate that that'll change once the school is built back. We anticipate we'll bring half of these kids back with us. But those are a number of factors that we're, that we're watching.
All right. I just wanted to clarify when you're mentioning the students enrolled in the ECDC program and the enrollment numbers, are those including the fee-based families?
Yes, that's including fee-based. So all told, with our EC, with our ECDC students, we're working at about 60 students total. So those 60 students that are in the ECDC program are accounted for in those numbers. Where there's a split between the Ashley Falls.
Why are we including those students, like families that are paying to go to the preschool? Why are they being included in our enrollment numbers?
For the, simply for the purpose of indicating these are the students that are here within our school district. We are providing the classroom teachers for them. So these are students who are within our district, our children who are here within our district.
Yeah, so I, I appreciate that the question was asked to break out how many are K through six. I think it's a little misleading to have that, that number of students for families that are paying to come to the preschool program. It just felt a little misleading. And then I wanted to know how, how the staffing numbers changed, so based off previous year. So I'd like to see how they can feature report, just to kind of see some trends. Please, thank you.
For Pacific Sky, how do the enrollment numbers compare to what you were anticipating this year?
That's where we're really trying to use our best magic eight ball and every asset. We were projecting or anticipating around 350. So the fact that we're working in right around 330 is pretty right on.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Thank you very much. But, Phil, go ahead.
Yep, absolutely.
You're 11.2. Board of people to utilize variable term waiver for adapted physical education.
And we do my best, Chris, and personally, you might get to stay here at the.
Yes, exactly.
I'm Jose, I'm just want to. So I'm requesting approval of a variable term waiver for our adapted PEE physicians. So the California Commission on Teacher Creativity, they provide a variable term waiver in order to allow qualified candidates who might need additional time or to complete their requirements. And so in this instance, we have a candidate who is highly qualified. He's been working in our district previously as a substitute. And the variable term waiver will enable him to be able to complete his additional coursework to obtain his APE authorization he's currently enrolled in the program. That will be completed in December. So the purpose of a waiver through the CTC is to allow candidates additional time to complete the credential requirements of California.
Any questions or a motion? Okay, for second?
I'll say it.
Okay, those favor?
Aye.
Okay, the motion to approve utilization and variable term waiver for adapted physical education is passed. 11.3 is board of people to utilize variable term waiver for speech, language pathology.
Yes, so this is requesting a waiver for the, also a variable term waiver for an employee. Or especially within the area of a speech-language pathologist, that is definitely a high demand and a high-end position in order to fill. And so in this case, after interviewing this candidate, our special education team felt 100% that this was the absolute best person to be able to be here and to support our students. She completed her program out of state. And so this waiver gives her additional time to be able to finish an exam and then be able to then qualify for a power of creation.
I'll move to approve it.
Okay, all of you favor? Aye. Okay, the motion to approve utilization and variable term waiver for speech, language, pathology has passed. Thank you. Closing items. 12.1 is board review reminder of upcoming DMUST events, which you will find in your agenda. 12.2 is board review reminder of upcoming DMSM and PTA events, also in your agenda. And 12.3 is a Glenn Wright address for the September 2022 regular board meeting. Are there any? Okay, same then. 12.4 is adjournment of the meeting. Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll move to adjourn.
Those favor?
Aye.
Okay, the meeting is adjourned at 8:00 PM. Good evening, everyone.